Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is October the 22nd, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. First up is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on October 8th, 2024 be adopted.
If there are no errors or omissions, I'll accept a motion from Counselor Latham. And Counselor Noble, let the minutes be adopted. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Remind members of any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Ain't none. Moving down to Section 5, Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Do we have a mover and second for that? Counselor Hens will move. Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Section 6, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. 6-1, The Warden's Activity Report for September 2024. The report is included in the agenda. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise looking to receive and file them. Deputy Warden Jones? Counselor Noble? Suppose we should read that motion?
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, September 2024, from Warden Ketchabah dated October 22nd, 2024, be received and filed.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 6-2, The Finance Committee Terms of Reference. Anyone want to speak to this other than me? Essentially, the report summarizes the fact that we're trying to expand the mandate of the Budget Finance Committee. This is something that was envisioned, I think, several years ago. And this gets us into to the expanded role more than just preparing the budget, but also taking a broader role in looking at the overall finances on a more regular basis and then bringing those reports back to council. Attached is the draft. If I can find it. The draft terms of reference. And if anyone has any questions, either I or Blaine or Jennifer's in the room, we can attempt to answer them. Yes, Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Basically, a comment. I certainly approve of the formation of the Finance Committee to take a broader look at finance policies as well as the budget. I wonder, and I wonder if consideration could be given to making this committee a full council committee. Not that I want another committee, but I think that if you look at the mandate of the Finance Committees, take a more holistic view in reviewing long-range financial plans and recommendations for proposed new financial and fiscal policies. It's often it's often wise to take a look at this kind of long-range plans more than once. You know, once the Finance Committee makes the recommendations, you've got four members of the Finance Committee on this council. It comes to council and perhaps the discussion wouldn't be as robust as if it were a full council, you know, full council committee. It may seem redundant, but certainly without, you know, certainly with precedence in a democracy where you have certainly provincial and federal governments that have first, second, and third readings of major legislation. Not that I want to follow the process of the governments necessarily, but I think I just kind of throw that out there for discussion to see whether there's any appetite for making this a full council committee.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have additional comments or response or rebuttal to that? Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And to some extent, I do agree with Counselor Cookett. Up until six years ago, that's what it was, was a Committee of Council. And I was quite happy with what you have actually said because it was a everybody got input into what was happening. Now, we didn't meet on a regular basis, the finance, but maybe we should have been. It may have been more instead of twice a year, whatever it was, maybe if it was four times a year, we'd have a better handle on what was happening, day-to-day operations. But I had no issue with what it was six years ago before we went to the committee style.
Okay. Additional comments from anyone? Counselor Jagir?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, it is an interesting suggestion because I know my reflection, initial comment was going to be about just in terms of the delegation and the discussions around asset management, for example. So there's a whole section where, you know, the committee would be asked to look at the asset management plan, which is almost, you know, almost everything, you know, we look after. So it does create a bit of redundancy where, you know, council would have to, I would expect council to have to have robust discussions around service levels and then to take it, you know, almost give direction to the committee, at which point do we need to just all sit together and just stay in that conversation? I guess although there's some redundancy, I could see one advantage is that you could have separate meetings that would strictly be dedicated. So it's still all of councils, but it's not a council meeting in the sense that it's completely separate and can be scheduled a little bit differently and just with a single focus. So it's an interesting thought and perhaps it's because it's a trans, we're still in transition. There's still a lot to be discussed around everything that's come up so far in terms of reserves, in terms of service levels. So not sure.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Any other thoughts? Or I throw my two cents in?
I'll wait for you, Warden, and then go.
Okay. Thank you for that. I don't think there was any intent of the committee usurping council authority. I think it's to serve as an advisory capacity only. Perhaps to dive a little deeper into some of the issues, but I think also that there may be some duplication of discussions when it comes to council. Perhaps even the committee at that point might have a better understanding and help shepherd things along. But you're right, is council's responsibility for the finances and the assets of the corporation. And this was not meant, as I say, to shortchange council at all. This is simply to help keep an eye on things, shepherd things along, come back to council, make full reports. Blaine, have I got, am I missing something?
Through you, Warden. I would never certainly imply that you were missing something. No, I think you captured things, Mr. Warden. There was never an intention of, you know, not including all of council. This was really just an evolution of the Budget Committee, which was a portion of council that sat on that committee to, as you said, dive a little deeper and perhaps a little broader was the main goal, to take a longer range view of the financial condition of the organization and of the county. But it's certainly, you know, up to council as to, you know, how they'd like the committee structured.
Absolutely. So having said that, anyone else? Any comments?
Through you, Warden. Thank you. And I was going to ask Blaine because I agree with Counselor Cookett that it's an important, now that we're over $100 million in budget per annum. My question actually to Mr. Parkin is if we looked at it in the sense of we have days that I would refer to as light on our regular agenda, if we were to schedule in the Finance Committee somehow in concert with the regular meeting and wanted to ask him his thoughts if he's had in previous municipalities. Has this been an official council or official arm of council? Thank you, Warden.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Sloan and members of council. In my previous experience, yes, we've always had financial-type committees. For the most part, they were a portion of council, treated more almost like a working group. In some cases, and I don't think previous council members will hear my comments, but in some cases it worked very well. In some cases, they struggled a little. But in the, if the times that it did work very well, we had members of council that were, had some financial background, had a good understanding of, you know, sort of long-range financial planning. And it really, the rest of council really appreciated their insights. So it worked more of as a more of a focused, dedicated working group along with a view of few senior staff members. So it generally worked fairly well in the past. Never was there a thought of not including all of council. The recommendations were always brought to Committee of the Whole at that time because the structure of the councils that I worked under were a little different than here. They came to Committee of the Whole for a fulsome discussion before going on to council as well. So there were multiple times of discussion or points of discussion.
Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My comments do not imply, I hope, hopefully, that this committee would usurp the, you know, the will of council, which is that in the discussions of the Finance Committee, there are people, as CEO Blaine has talked about, that probably wouldn't partake in the discussion because of less knowledge of financial matters. But I think it's, it would be important for them to hear the discussion, the basic discussion that happens in the Finance Committee. So I think it becomes a greater opportunity for people to be educated about the budget and about policy matters. It's not always reflected in a report.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. Anyone else? I guess the one last thing I would add for out there is that there is nothing precluding any member of council any time from attending or participating in any committee. May not have a vote if you're not named to that particular committee, but still, there's no reason not to attend if you're interested in just leaving it that. So having said that, what would you like to do?
Through you, Warden.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm playing by the rules. Through you, Warden, if Counselor Cookett has a motion he wants to make, I'd be glad to hear it and see if there was a second.
Sure. Yes, Counselor Cookett. I'm sorry, I'm studying the motion.
Yes, just to answer Counselor Sloan. I would like to make the motion just to kind of finalize the discussion that we make the Finance Committee a full member, I guess, all members of council, however you want to wordcraft that.
So would that be crafted as a Committee of the Whole, more or less? Be the same rules as council meeting anyway. Yeah. Well, so name a vote. All right, that's the proposal. All right, just in discussions with the clerk. Vote on, she has some wording here, but essentially we would expand the membership to include all of council. I think that's what you're getting at. Read your potential motion here and then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That the committee terms of reference be amended to include all counselors as members of the Finance Committee.
That's the first part. So that would be, you're going to say, or move that? Okay. Counselor Sloan?
I'll second that, Warden. Thank you.
All right, let's call that question. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Now let's move on with the second.
Resolved that the report titled Finance Committee Terms of Reference from Warden Ketchabah dated October 22nd, 2024, be received and filed and that the Budget Committee evolve to a Finance Committee with a broader mandate as described herein this report and that County Council adopt the amended committee terms of reference for the Finance Committee as recommended by the committee and that an updated version of the committee bylaw incorporating these changes be brought forward for council consideration at a future meeting.
Okay. Keeping in mind that that includes an expanded membership to include all of council. Do we have a mover and second for that? Counselor Jagir? Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor of that? That is carried. Congratulations. Got another job. Section 6-3, Director Finance, Financial Services, the Treasurer, the 2023 Investment Summary Report. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The report before you outlines the investments that were on hand at December 31st, 2023. All of the investments are consistent with the Municipal Act and the county investment policy that was passed on July 26th, 2022. The average return on investment is based on the average daily balances held within the accounts throughout the year rather than directly related to those balances shown within the account at year end. And just a reminder that the final levy payment does come into the county on December 15th, and that's why there's a large amount in the HISA at the end of the year. The $10 million that was held have various dates when they're coming due. So the amounts that we accrued were just the amounts that were available to us or expected to have been received at December 31st, 2023. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report, Jennifer. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Sloan?
Thanks. Through you, Warden. We have options other than GICs. We have $33 million approximately that's been invested. I'd like to know about longer term. The majority of these, I take it, are short-term with respect to GICs and whether we look at longer term and essentially forecasting as interest rates look to go down later this month. Thank you.
Okay. Jen, do you have a response for that, please?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. At this time, when this report was done, we had we haven't taken out the amount that we are to be taking out for Terrace Lodge at this time. So at this point, I wanted to keep as much of it liquid because we still have a few large bills that will be coming through before we take out that loan. So yes, in the future, we will be able to probably look at some longer-term investments, but right now we're looking at one-year terms.
So just to summarize, you're keeping the accounts liquid enough to take care of those short-term requirements that are coming along?
Correct.
All right. Counselor Sloan, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, with respect to the amount for Terrace Lodge, I'd just like to know what the amount was, please?
The amount that we will be taking out on the loan?
Okay. And just as a follow-up and showing, I don't know how, with respect to municipal politics versus private sector, when you look at short, medium, and long-term investments, do you have the ability to go, is there any municipal act or anything requiring you not to go into, say, a three- to five-year term?
Okay. Jennifer?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. No, that is certainly doable depending on like what the future of the county looks like. We wouldn't want to be tying up a lot of the investment money if we were planning to spend it on, say, roads or growth. That would be, we'd then have to take out some debt in order to do that. And whether or not the taking out the debt would offset having it in an investment, that would be a decision that we'd have to look at.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Yes, Blaine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to members of committee. Already are taking as the Finance Committee. This, Counselor Sloan, these are the exact type of discussions that we want to have at a Finance Committee is, is taking that broader view, that longer-range view and looking at, you know, the financial sustainability of the county and the, and the organization from a broader perspective. So it's these type of policy and strategic discussions that, that will be held at the Finance Committee. So thank you for bringing those up.
Okay. Do you have no further questions or comments? Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled 2023 Investment Summary Report from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer dated October 22nd, 2024, be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and second for that? Counselor Whitner and Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section 6-4, Director of Community and Cultural Services, the Provincial Funding for Outdoor Spaces in Elgin County. Good morning, Brian.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to council. This report informs council that the library has been successful with an application to the province's Inclusive Community Grants Program in the amount of $36,300 to support furniture and equipment at Stratfordville, Dutton, and Westlawn Library branches, at the Heritage Center, and at Terrace Lodge. These installations will create outdoor reading and leisure spaces at these locations. We've received excellent community support for the proposed projects, including the direct support of local municipal partners as well as the Otter Valley Naturalists and the Westlawn and Community Horticultural Society. Procurement of the items will begin in the, in the coming days, and we expect projects to be completed by spring 2025. All the items associated with these projects are very durable, require little or no ongoing maintenance, and should have a lifespan of at least 10 years or even longer. So there should be little or no impact on future county budgets or local municipal partner budgets. Reading Garden Maintenance is a partnership, as indicated, with the two local horticultural societies who have beautified our library spaces for many years. And we do have those partnerships for most of our branches as well, local media groups. The terms have received legal review and the province's terms state that the items are owned outright by the county and are to remain our permanent property. I expect the media opportunity will be arranged with our MPP and perhaps the minister at a later date in involving Warden and council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you for that report, Brian. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Counselor Sloan?
Thanks. Through you, Warden, to Mr. Mascale. We, we've got, when I realize it's only $36,000, but how do you make the decisions on where money is spent with respect to which library or the Heritage Center or Terrace Lodge? How does that come to be?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Counselor Sloan. In the cases of the reading gardens at Westlawn and Stratfordville, that was really a function of the space available in the proposals from the Horticultural Society. So as an example, in Stratfordville, there's a pollinator garden that has been developed by the Horticultural Society. This will be not right in the middle of the pollinator garden, but adjacent to it, this equipment. So part of it is a function of having the space available. So as an example, we wouldn't have the ability, let's say, at our Port Stanley branch, to necessarily have an elaborate reading garden in front of the branch because of the walkway. So some of this is just based on foot traffic. The book bins require a parking lot to be able to do the drive-through that we're proposing for these two bins. And Stratfordville and Dutton have such parking lots that accommodate that we already have a good bin at Shen. So it's very much just a product of what spaces we have available. In the case of Terrace Lodge, that was just an opportunity to work with the activation staff and the benches that are already going in and to put a couple more in and create another reading space there. So it was really a case of just looking at where needs are and also what community partnerships exist and picking spots where this is actually going to work because you do need the space, the outdoor space, to install this equipment.
All right. Thank you for that, Brian. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for that, Brian. Again, it's very encouraging to see the kind of municipal, private partnership out here. This is how it's supposed to work. So this is great. Catherine, please.
Resolved that Elgin County Library be authorized to accept the terms and conditions of a funding agreement with the Province of Ontario for a contribution of $36,300 under the Inclusive Community Grants Program 2024-2025 for a project called Enhancing Access to Outdoor and Cultural Spaces for Rural Residents in Elgin County as outlined in the October 22nd, 2024, report titled Provincial Funding for Outdoor Spaces in Elgin County and that the Warden, on behalf of Elgin County Council, issue letters of appreciation to the Otter Valley Naturalists and Westlawn and Community Horticultural Society for their support of these projects.
Do we have a mover and second for that? Richard, Counselor Latham, excuse me, and Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 6-5, Manager Administrative Services, Deputy Clerk, Recommended Updates to the Procedural Bylaw 19-41. Catherine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. As council is aware, the administrative services staff have been undertaking a comprehensive review of the existing administrative services and council policies and bylaws to ensure their accuracy, consistency, and clarity. As part of this initiative, we have been working on a review of our procedural bylaw. This procedural bylaw was last updated with minor revisions in 2019, and there were subsequent amendments made in 2020 to facilitate electronic participation in accordance with Section 238 of the Municipal Act during the COVID-19 pandemic. And then again in 2021 to modify election procedures for the annual Warden's election, specifically to put in procedures for breaking a three-way tie as that was not included in the previous procedural bylaw. So we have a current procedural bylaw with two amendments on it, and staff are recommending that it undergo a comprehensive review and revision for several reasons. One is a logical reorganization. The way that the document reads currently doesn't flow quite as well as it should and for usability and readability, it's not logical. So we would like to do a reorganization. Also for clarity and direction, there are areas where additional guidance is necessary, ensuring that procedures are clearly defined and unambiguous. Additionally, we would like to refine the language used in the bylaw to eliminate any vagueness or potential for multiple interpretations and to ensure that there is consistent terminology. Additionally, there are some housekeeping amendments consolidating in the existing amendments on the bylaw to streamline the document. And then, of course, going through for grammatical errors and updating references to outdated bylaws, which have since been updated since this bylaw was done. So our review process is that staff in the Administrative Services Department and the Legal Services Department have conducted a thorough review of the procedural bylaw. And there are some proposed amendments in the chart attached, which I will go through with council in a minute. And this is the time for council discussion and consideration of these proposed changes as well as maybe other proposed changes. After staff have received council's feedback, we will take this feedback and incorporate it into a draft bylaw in a bylaw format to bring back to council for review. And after that, at a subsequent meeting, then the bylaw will be brought forward for adoption. So this is the opportunity for some discussion on proposed changes to the proceedings that regulate council. So I will go through my chart. I will try to not read everything. It's quite a lengthy chart. Just the first section, we propose incorporating a short title. This is something that's very common in procedural bylaws that we don't currently have in ours. And it's just so that every time we refer to the bylaw within the document, we don't need to refer to it as being a bylaw to regulate the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. So that's just, it's a housekeeping. The second section is just that there were some definitions that we're fine with the current definitions that are in the procedural bylaw, but there were a few that we thought should be added. I do want to note that adjourn means to conclude the meeting, and that was just an inconsistency that I, I missed. But really, there was no comment on those, just that we thought that they could be added to clarify. The next section deals with Sections 4, 5, 6, 7, 40, and 41, which are the application of the bylaw, the interpretation of the bylaw, suspension of the rules, majority voting, general provisions, and conflicts with the Municipal Act. In reviewing the bylaw, staff realized that Sections 40 and 41 and in some duplicate and in some cases contradict different provisions that are in Sections 4, 5, and 6. So we recommended, since they all deal with sort of general rules, the application of the bylaw, what happens if the bylaw conflicts with the Municipal Act? It's just recommended that these sections are all combined under Sections 4 that Sections 4 and 5 be combined under the heading of General Provisions, which we will move to the beginning of the bylaw as it makes more sense in that area. And that we will remove Sections 40 and 41 and that anything that's redundant will be removed and everything that isn't from those sections are moved into the general provisions that you see in the column to the left. Section 7 also covers majority voting, and it's recommended that this section be removed as a standalone provision and instead be incorporated into the section where we and instead be incorporated into the section where we discuss voting. Section six set out the procedures for suspending the rules of this bylaw. So if council decides that they would like to suspend the rules of the bylaw, they can do so through a vote. And section six and section forty contradicted each other. So in one section, it said that a majority vote was required, which is five members of council, and in another section, it said that a two-thirds vote is required, which is six members. So we would like to obviously eliminate that inconsistency, and staff are recommending that we go with the two-thirds vote, but it's up to council to decide. The next section does not refer to an existing section. As when this bylaw was redone last, we didn't livestream our meetings. So we currently don't have any provisions that govern how we livestream our meetings and what were to happen if the livestream was not functioning. So there are times where we do sometimes struggle with the technology, and we, as staff, want some clarification from council as to what we should be doing at this time, doing some research with other bylaws. They indicate that we will make the best efforts possible to livestream our meetings. However, if there is technical, are technical difficulties or the internet is down, we will not cancel the meeting. We will continue the meeting, and the minutes will stand as the official record of the meeting. We also include in here that if we were to hold our meeting off-site for some reason, we are not required to livestream. But yes, council, we're happy to hear from council on their thoughts on that section, but we thought that it was important that this is officially codified within our bylaw so that when these situations arise, staff have definite direction as to how to proceed. The next section is section nine, and it deals with the inaugural meeting and annual election of the Warden. This was amended, as I previously mentioned, in by bylaw twenty one forty-two in twenty twenty one. This amendment is already in force, but it is not consolidated into the existing bylaws. So staff are recommending that this consolidation occur. Section ten deals with the appointment of a deputy warden, and currently, there is no direction provided for the procedure to elect a deputy warden should no former wardens remain on council after a municipal election. So it is recommended that, should an election for deputy warden be required, that the same procedures for electing a warden be utilized. This provision is drafted so that in a year where an election of a deputy warden is necessary, any member that is not the warden can seek to be a deputy warden. Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering if Catherine, you want comments as we go through, or do we go through and then we come back?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Shiger. Yes, I apologize. That actually would probably be more helpful. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Warden. So if I, so if I can go back then, just on the previous one around video streaming. So, so I understand, and I totally agree with when we publish the fact that it won't be video streamed, for example, because we're off-site or for whatever reason. So the public then knows in advance, and if they want to attend, then they can come, and the same with the media. So my concern is when we publish the fact that it will be video streamed. So the media and the public plan accordingly. And then nine o'clock rolls in, there's a glitch, and then we say, oops, sorry, not video streaming. And there's no time really for the public or the media to switch gears and perhaps come and attend in public. And I always see these opportunities to anticipate, like worst-case scenario, where a bit of a switch in between what was published and what we end up doing happens within a minute with no but, you know, room for reaction, and that could be perceived, okay, perhaps, just a perception as done intentionally. So I'm wondering if, what your thoughts are on that? Like, is there a way to prevent, and do we, for example, say, agree on a delay of maximum fifteen minutes? So A, it takes, it gives us time, like we postpone the meeting by fifteen minutes, for example, gets us time to perhaps fix the glitch, but also perhaps for the public to react and switch gears and or the media to come in person. I wonder what your thoughts are on that.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I think that that would be appropriate. We could include in the the draft we bring back that should technology malfunction, a delay of perhaps twenty minutes, allowing for staff to inform the media and the public.
Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden. I appreciate Counselor Shiger's comments very much. But what, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, let's say we have audio and not video. Like, I guess what I'm trying to say is before we sort of say we're going to wait for twenty minutes, is it okay to proceed if we have one or the other? And I know with video and no audio, it wouldn't really work, but, and I just a quick question to the folks and the younger and wiser that have been here before me. It's not legislated by the province that we have to livestream, correct? It just came as a as a function of COVID? So personally, when it comes to something like the Warden's election, I mean, it's, I realize it's nail-biting and must-see YouTube, but I would hate to think that we have to. I appreciate Counselor Shiger's comments, but I'm just sort of, we'd have to really kind of, what's the word, hammer that out, if you will. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, thank you for that. Please, Counselor Shiger.
And I thank you, Mr. Warden. I wanted to just make sure it was very clear that I perfectly agree that we have no obligation. The problem is, if we publish the fact that this will be livestreamed, it's right there, and then the media and the public plan accordingly. And so they don't, so if we say this will not be livestreamed, we're perfectly in our right, because then those who want to attend the discussion will come in. So when there's a bit of a bait and switch, that could be a problem. Maybe it's just ten minutes. Because twenty minutes can be a long time, but but just something to acknowledge that we committed to something, and now at the last minute, we're not doing it.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So my understanding, when the county livestreams, it's through Facebook. So that notice could go up on Facebook that we're having technical difficulties. Please stand by as we try and work through the problems. This is never going to be foolproof, because we're at the mercy of the technology that tends to let us down time to time. And I think all we can do is our best, and and we do post the meetings, the recorded meetings, right? So that, like, after they're approved by council, so they will be available for people to see in the future, I would think.
Catherine.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We do, however, if there is a problem with the recording, that's, then we are not able to post that video after if we aren't able to record.
Okay. Counselor Whitner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I wonder if there's any opportunity we could have, like a separate recording camera, just for redundancy. Record the meeting, so if something happens, that one is there and is available for viewing later on. That'll be something we can do, I would think, that way.
Something for consideration, perhaps maybe ask staff to look into that. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Maybe the Warden could wear a helmet cam.
Yeah, there you go. Sure. Okay, now, okay, Counselor Sloan.
I'm just sorry, not to to try to, I mean, camera-wise, but I mean, there's, I don't know how many people in this room right now, but thirty of them have a recording device. So we'd have audio from anyone if we had to turn it on. I'm just passing that along, Warden.
There's an idea as well. So perhaps we don't have, as you say, a video recording of the proceedings, but there might be an audio one somewhere that we could publish later. One question I have, and something I think staff would, I would ask you to do some consideration of. If it's a case that we find from a technical point of view, we can't have the meeting livestreamed, is ten minutes, twenty minutes enough? Should it be a long enough delay so that someone, say, from Rodney, that want to make the trip down, has time to get here? Is it an hour delay? I don't know. It means we're sitting around for a while. But the point being, to fulfill what you're getting at, Counselor Shiger, should it be enough time if people really want to get here to be here? Just a question for something for consideration. Deputy Warden Jones.
I guess at that point, through you, through you, Mr. Ward, the dilemma becomes, a lot of us have meetings after the meeting, and now you're putting us in a pickle where maybe a meeting that we need to be at, and now do we have to leave county an hour early to be at that meeting?
I understand that. Trying to try to find the common ground here. Yes.
Warden, if I could try and answer your question, if I'm coming from Rodney and I'm doing a delegation, that's one thing, but if I'm coming from Rodney St. Thomas, or pardon me, Rodney, Malahai, Dalmer, anywhere else in the the great county, I can't really participate in the meeting.
No, just to sit here and witness.
Okay, so I'm witnessing. It's not like I'm, I'm going to be voting or I'm going to be, you know, engaging. So to answer your question, I think that, you know, whether someone's coming from further afield, they they will be ultimately able to hear something afterwards, just to comment.
So we're getting around here. We're getting to the point, we're going to have, even if it's the technology in the room's not working, but if we have the ability to even audio-record something and get it back out and posted, then does it preclude the need, right, to even? All attempts are going to be made, is what I'm trying to get at. We've come full circle a little bit. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I think the Warden has the ability to delay for ten minutes if the staff needs that time. I don't think it's something where you can't do that. That's up the chair to be able to do that, if there's a thing, something that they think they can fix quickly.
Well, thank you. That's foreshadowing on the sections that she's got coming up. But yes, thank you for those comments. Counselor Shiger.
Yeah, and I think the, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I think the intent is not to give someone time to and for to wait for someone to arrive, but just, I think it's a, it's a gesture, it's a signal. We will pause, and then they may arrive late.
Sure.
Which would be fine. So I think like a ten-minute, just a recognition that we are taking this seriously if if something changes. But I think the recording, the sort of impromptu recording, informal recording is a nice backup as well.
Okay, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. We do also always have the minutes as the official record, so that's important to remember. I think I would caution against putting in a procedural bylaw that we're going to have a backup recording, but it could be something that we investigate as staff to to have on hand as a backup audio recording, you know, perhaps using someone's iPhone or a recording device, just in case. I just want to, would like to know if council's in agreement about putting in a short delay and how long that short delay is. Is ten minutes enough? Is fifteen? Thank you.
Long enough to get your phone set up and get recording. Yeah, but I appreciate how it is written within that all. Wow, an attempt is made to make sure that it can be done. Yeah, okay. Counselor Sloan.
Stand up, sorry. Could it be at the discretion of the Warden? As Counselor Jones suggested.
From a recess point of view, yes. Yep. Anything further on this particular section? Okay, Catherine. And please jump in when you have questions. Okay, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So we, when we stopped, we were just talking about the position of deputy warden. And I think the way I read it, it talks about the need to elect a deputy warden only after the election and and therefore the inaugural meeting. And I think we need to capture that there could be other circumstances where the deputy, where we may need to elect a deputy warden. So unfortunately, if the deputy warden is ill for a long term or passes away or is no longer on council for whatever reason, any time during the term.
Yep.
So if there's nobody else on council that fits the criteria, we could be in a position. So that's, I was wondering if we should capture the procedure that it's not just always after the election and at the beginning of the term.
How about it says here within section ten, the election of the deputy warden when necessary? Meaning if if the past, immediate past warden isn't readily available, then the election could take place. Does that capture it, Counselors here?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It was just because of the words that followed right there, that shall follow the election of the warden.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying, that's not necessarily the case. There could be, we could be midterm, there's no change in the warden.
Yep.
But the deputy warden is no longer on council, therefore, so maybe we just end end the sentence, like when necessary or something like that.
Okay, I think the intention was to suggest from a procedural point of view, but still, even if it's midterm, it followed the election of the warden. Yes, it did. If it happened in January or June or whenever else, the election of the warden is December, we can, we could mince words with this one, but.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think, yes, the intention was procedurally that at the Warden's election, the Warden would first be elected and then the deputy warden. If council's in agreement, we could just add another point that says something to the effect of, if any point during their term, the deputy warden is unable to continue in their role, an election following the same procedures will occur.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Nick, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. I will have to go back and cross-reference, but this is a great point that's been brought up, and that may actually also need to be changed with regard to the Warden. That going from memory, I think the Warden's election is only specified at the inaugural meeting and annually thereafter, so we should make the same tweak. So I'm just pointing out, we will do that when we bring it back.
That's right. However, in that case, normally, if the Warden is no longer able to, you know, serve in that capacity, it would be incumbent upon the deputy warden to fill that role, would it not? That's the intention, I understand.
Yes, thank you, Warden. And so it's really to make sure that that's all clear in the procedural bylaw? If that's the procedure that follows, just making it clear that that would occur during the big conceit of Warden, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we're ready to proceed, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just wondering if there were any other comments about any of the other items that I discussed. I think I also, I discussed section nine consolidating the the amendment to the election procedures into the bylaw. And then I think that was the only other one that I have discussed.
Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So in section nine, around the election, so are you saying there would be no further changes? Are you, are you, other than than the consolidation? Will there be room at some point to review the election process if, or to gather feedback on the election process?
Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, we can do that now.
Counselor Shiger.
Warden, I would be, I would be interested in if staff have any suggestions. I think the the last election, I don't know, some were surprised or or maybe dissatisfied perhaps with the with the process, or so if there, if staff have recommendation or ideas for us to consider, I think that would be appreciated.
Counselor Sloan.
Further to Counselor Shiger's point, I had a question, just to help me understand here. If, could you walk me through, and we're just, this is the whole document we're discussing now, is that fair? Okay, thank you. The deputy clerk, I didn't mean to touch on your. So if if three people ran for Warden and each got three votes, could you help me understand what would happen, please?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. Just let me reference my document here. I might need Nick to help me out here a little bit. It is, it is rather confusing. It's a lot easier if there are two candidates. Hint, hint. It's my understanding that sorry, if, it's my understanding that if there are three candidates and there's a three-way tie, then there's another vote. And if there is still a three-way tie, then I do believe that they are all put into a draw. And the one that comes out of the draw is the one that is eliminated. And then the other two go into a two-person round of voting.
Sorry.
Please.
Through you, Warden. The reason I ask was because I found it a bit confusing, no, no, no criticism to you, the deputy clerk. But in the last one, whereas Counselor Shiger mentions that it was a bit, you know, we were about to go to a Mexican shootout, I think I, but it seems to me that it's changed now because we, we pulled from the hat on this one, and that person is out, as opposed to becoming the warden. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Yes, that's if there are three. If, if, if there are only two, then it goes to a second round of voting, and if there's still a tie, that's when it goes in. And then, and then that person gets pulled, and then that person who is pulled is then the warden. I have done a little bit of research, and it is fairly common to, after a couple rounds of voting, to go to the draw for, when there's two people. There are, most other counties do it that way. Sometimes, some of them do a few more rounds of voting, more than two. And then there are some that after a certain amount, they then all call out their votes. So if there is a tie, if there are too many ties in a row, then, then everyone is required to call out their vote. Now, I'm not sure what happens if that is still a tie.
Counselor Sloan.
And just to follow up, I don't mean to belabor the point. If three people have three votes, they have a 33% chance, it doesn't change. It should, you know, a third, you, you have a 33% chance of winning. The odds change if you change it for one going out and then two people. But I, I, I take your point that these are exceptions, but last year seemed to be a little bit of new territory. That's my final, thank you, Warden.
Catherine.
I can't really speak to last year because I was still off on my maternity leave. I think the, the current amendment and the current procedure are designed for the idea that there should, there can only be, technically, there could only be a tie if three people are running, or all nine are running, based on the numbers. So if, I, I'd be happy to accept any suggestions from council, because I think from the research that I've done from other counties in Ontario, it's either done very similar to the way that we do it, in that after two or three maybe rounds of voting, if there are still ties, then they, they draw a successful candidate from the hat, or the box. Or after a couple of rounds of, of ties, then everyone calls out their vote. I'm not sure if Nick or Blaine have any other suggestions. That's, or if council has any suggestions, I'd be happy to incorporate them or to, to do further research.
Okay, Nick.
Thank you, Warden. Just as a point of clarification, if there are three that all tie across the board, and there's then a revote, and they're still all tied, then it does go to lots, but the person, the name picked out is the name that's eliminated, so then there's two that remain standing. So if there's three across the board, the way the procedural bylaw is structured right now is the name that comes out doesn't become the warden, one among three, the name that comes out is eliminated, and then the two go to, you go back into the scenario where you're voting for two. So I just want to provide that clarification. That said, all of this can be changed, like you're free to pick the rules of, of your own election. So if that's not laddable, that's a change that can be made. And then my only additional comment to Catherine's description earlier, is just to point out that eventually there has to be a mechanism to break a tie that looks something like drawing a lot out of a box one way or the other, because even if we add a layer of multiple, more rounds of voting, and people calling out their vote, nothing about that will necessarily resolve the tie one way or the other, right? So if we do not create a mechanism that resolves a tie, then the scenario you are in is just voting until someone gets tired enough to switch their vote, essentially, which is, I'm sorry, I should say, is a valid way to proceed. There's nothing unlawful about that. Staff recommendation would be normally to have a mechanism for, for resolving a tie, though.
Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. I think the one part that's a little bit confusing is the fact that if you have a tie between two people, the person pulled out of the hat is the winner, whereas if you have a tie between three people, the person pulled out of the hat is the loser. And I, I don't know that that kind of makes sense when you have a tie that's gone three ways a couple of times. I don't think that the person pulled out of the hat should be the loser.
Yeah. I think the process is that way for more than two candidates, is because the first round of voting is meant to eliminate one, and then move forward from there. So I think that makes some sense of why it's that way. But I get your point. Anyone else? Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a clarification, if it's a, it's a spoken vote, how would we get a tie? If you wouldn't be able to abstain, or spoil. Because, I mean, usually abstain goes negative, but in this case, you're, you're choosing, so it wouldn't be a tie.
You could theoretically, you could vote or cast your ballot for someone who's not even on the ticket. That's a spoiled ballot.
Even in a, in a recorded?
In a word, in a recorded verbal.
Verbal?
You know, if everybody stood up and shouted a name out, who they wanted, someone could stand up and say, I vote for Jolly Roger. Well, it's not even on the ticket, but it's a spoiled ballot.
But you would only be able to vote, I mean, the procedure, I guess, could specify that you need to select between the candidates. Okay, I just wanted to clarify how we could possibly get to a tie.
Even on a written ballot, it's possible to have a spoiled ballot.
On the written one, I understand, but just on the verbal one, I wasn't sure how.
Okay. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I did hear quite a few comments after the last election from former counselors and wardens that they thought they should go back to the way of casting your vote, stand up and publicly do it. They thought that worked well when they were on, they didn't understand this new procedure, so just throw that out there for information's sake.
Thank you for that. At one time, there were 26 faces to hide behind. That's the size of County Council, was it not? Yes. Before amalgamation in 98. Yeah. So it was an interesting time. Yeah. Shall we see what staff come back with? Because again, you're not adopting this today, it's just, there are always chances to amend. Okay. We got quite a few sections to go through, right? Is anyone interested in a break right now? Because I am, for a quick one. Let's take a five-minute break and recess, and then come back and carry on, and we left off at Section 11. Thank you. Welcome back. We left off at Section 6.5, Section 11 of a review of the procedural bylaw. Catherine, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you to County Council. I will continue, and I'll pause briefly after each section, just in case anyone wants to make a comment. Section 11 is fairly easy, it just deals with the notice of council meetings. And the current bylaw references our previous version of the notice bylaw, which council updated earlier this year, which is now bylaw 2415. So this bylaw includes many references to bylaw 0729, which was our previous notice bylaw. So we no longer go by those provisions, we go by the provisions of the new bylaw. And also, this section does not specifically include notice requirements for posting the agenda publicly online, which was something that we noted in the notice bylaw and changed in that bylaw to indicate a timeframe. So this just changes that as well to incorporate the changes that we've made to the notice bylaw earlier this year into the procedural bylaw.
Any questions on Section 11B? Okay, seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The next section deals with Sections 11, C, D, E, and F, which deal with special meetings of council and emergency meetings of council. In reviewing these sections, staff realized that the distinction between special meetings of council and emergency meetings of council wasn't, wasn't put very well in the bylaw, that it, they seemed as if they were one in the same. Language about emergencies was in the section about special meetings, so staff have just done some rewording, mostly in the main sections. The sections about notice are similar to the previous or the current bylaw. But the main change is that for special meetings, we wanted to take out language about emergencies, and just include where there are items of an urgent or time-sensitive nature that warrant a meeting before the next council meeting, or meetings that warrant their own council meetings, subjects that warrant their own council meetings. So sometimes we do strategic planning sessions, or there's a session, I know we've done one previously about economic development. So those type of items go under special meetings, they're not during a regular council meeting, but they are also not considered an emergency. So under emergency meetings, that's where there are things that, you know, either the province has declared an emergency, or there is something that will affect the health and well-being of residents of the county, or that a state of emergency is declared. So really, the main thing in this section is that we wanted to have the language differentiate between these two types of meetings, so it was clear.
Any questions on these two particular sections, or distinctions between special and/or emergency meetings? The one I would note that under special meetings, the majority of council members, should they wish to petition a clerk, can do so under special meeting, but not under emergency meetings. Okay. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick question. What, how would you classify a cyber attack? For example, so would that warrant a, an emergency meeting potentially? And that would not be really about the well, the health or well-being of the residents?
Correct. Catherine, I, my interpretation would, it would be an emergency meeting. We held one, actually, it was by phone.
Speaking from experience, that was an emergency meeting that we had. So I wonder if it's the well-being, or if we could reword perhaps the health, well-being?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Perhaps health, well-being, and security?
That, that would work. Okay, anyone else? Okay. That brings us to public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. This is just a section, we don't currently have a section in our procedural bylaw that governs the calling of public meetings. We don't call public meetings very frequently at the county level. However, when we do, staff would like to have the procedures for calling a public meeting. And also, later you'll see in a different section, the actual agenda format for a public meeting, codified in our procedural bylaw.
Any concerns, questions? Okay. Quorum?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In current Section 11K, we describe quorum, but we didn't indicate how many members determine quorum, so just for clarity's sake, staff are recommending that be added.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Will be non-then, Section 11M, electronic participation?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Previously, in our current procedural bylaw, it indicated that members could participate electronically, but they were restricted in their participation. They were not permitted to vote or count towards quorum. But in 2020, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Municipal Act, Section 238 was amended, allowing for participating, those participating electronically to be full-voting members of council. And we amended this as a county with bylaw 2047. So this stands currently, allowing counselors to participate electronically and count towards quorum. However, we are recommending that it be consolidated into the main bylaw. Additionally, and there was a bit of confusion, and this was just because of an error on my part. I made a change to my own recommendations, and then forgot to change it in the explanation section. But when we originally adopted this bylaw, the practice was for each member to call out their vote for every resolution, and this was recorded in a chart in the minutes, as counselors that were on, on council at the time would remember. This practice was dispensed of when we returned to meeting in person. And occasionally, members do join us electronically. And at this time, we are indicating, I would like to change it, that it's just recommended that they can vote with a show of hands. And so I, it didn't change that in my explanation, but in the, the chart form, I said that they must signal yea or nay.
Okay. All right, don't see any concerns on that, Catherine.
The next section, it just discusses Sections 12 to 26, excluding Section 21. These, the section, these sections deal with the items related to the agenda, and they explain each agenda item, but they aren't currently in the order that they appear on the agenda. So staff are recommending that these be reordered, and put directly after we discuss what the format of the agenda is, and then each of those items, so called to order. All of those items that have explanations should be in order, in descending order underneath that, just for consistency and ease of reading.
Okay, and more clarity is under Section 13 on that. All right. Unless I see any concerns, let's move on, then, with 13.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So this section, just in our current bylaw, Section 13A, discusses the format that we use for our council agenda. So there were a few things that staff were recommending be added. One is that we currently don't have an approval of the agenda items, so we would like to add that. I do say in my description that it's going to be added under adoption of the minutes, but after more discussion with staff in the administrative services department, we decided that we thought it should come before the adoption of the minutes, just to be consistent with our committee bylaw and committee agenda format. And then also, we would like to add another section that is called Introductions, Recognitions, and Memorials, right at the beginning of a meeting, after a meeting is called to order. This can provide an avenue for staff, you know, sometimes there are awards, or there's a moment of silence for a past warden who's passed away, or someone's retiring and a certificate is presented. This just provides a formal spot on the agenda where staff can actually indicate in advance, so that the public can see that this is happening, and that council can see that this is coming up. Currently, this is dealt with under Section 25, which is called Presentations and Recognitions. And it covers these items, but we didn't have a corresponding agenda item in our list, so we're adding that, and changing the name to Introductions, Recognitions, and Memorials. We are also adding a section called Motions, which will be added under the Other Business section. And this is where motions that were previously introduced under the Notice of Motion section will be dealt with. There are, there will be more discussion about this when we get to the section about notices of motion. But we wanted to add that in as a formal spot to put that. And we also are recommending that we remove recess from the agenda structure, as we do not call recesses in the order that they're indicated in the agenda, they're called at the discretion of the warden in consultation with council. And then also, as previously discussed, we don't have currently any public meeting format. So we just wanted to have a format for how we create our agendas when we do need to call a public meeting. Sometimes we have to do so for planning. And that's, that's all for this section. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns? Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to revisit our structure with the Committee of the Hall, and because what I've, my understanding and what I like about the Committee of the Hall, it's, because we can treat it like any other committees, where the committee goes into, you know, it's almost like a working group, and we receive reports, we can debate in a more informal way. We can debate in a more informal way. And then at the next meeting, so then the Committee of the Whole makes recommendations to council, and then council can vote on those recommendations. So as we all know, in this format, within minutes, we basically approve, like council approves, all the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole. So there's no space at all, and I'm wondering, so then what is the point? And so is there room to maybe going to a more traditional use of the Committee of the Whole, where the first portion of the meeting is a council meeting? If there are reports, and there you can, you know how we receive a lot of reports that are just to receive and file, they're mandatory sedentary reports. There's not a lot of debate needed. We're not revising or giving direction or advice, and that can all be dealt with by council. But when we're receiving a policy like we're doing right now, for example, that could then, and often, we end up almost deferring anyway because staff need to think about it, and then it comes back to council. So that's my understanding of a more traditional way of using and using the Committee of the Whole structure well. I think the other advantage is it addresses perception of the public sometimes that there's no time to respond or react or to contact their counselors when we've just debated something, and perhaps they would like to do a delegation and add their voice to the debate, but they're supposed to book their delegation, you know, a week before the agenda comes out. So if we debate something today, the public hears it, and the Committee of the Whole makes a recommendation. It doesn't get voted by council until two weeks later. So it gives lots of opportunity for the public, for all of us, to, again, like sober second thoughts or for staff to tweak reports. So I was wondering if we could open that discussion.
Okay. Any thoughts? Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It actually makes a lot of sense. I've often wondered why we did Committee of the Whole personally, but I never raised the question. But yeah, that would make a lot of sense.
Well, it seems to me, yeah, the, and though at the local level in BAM, we don't necessarily have a Committee of the Whole, but we operate as a Committee of the Whole anyway, in more informal way. And it is to permit discussion, say, outside of Robert's rules, whereas you can speak to a topic more than once. I'm wondering, and I appreciate what you're saying, Counselor Shiger. Unless it's an emergency, like from a timeframe perspective, once we debate a policy, I see no reason why a bylaw should come forward until we have the next meeting anyway, which gives the public an opportunity. So it can be one or two different mechanisms here, but whatever council's, you know, comfortable with. But I agree with what you're saying. Transparency, give the public an opportunity here to participate, should they so desire. I think maybe you're catching the gist of what we're after, Catherine.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I think this would significantly change the format of our council meetings and, to an extent, how, you know, we operate as a staff. But if council, I have been at the county for most of my career, so this is what I know. But from my understanding from others, it is different than a lot of other places operate. So staff are happy to bring back some options of formats at a future meeting that council can discuss. I think we would just probably like a little bit of time to do some research about what type of a format and how it might affect just the procedures that we do. So we would be happy to do that if that's something that council is interested in.
Personally, I am sensing around the table, they are interested in taking a look at an alternative format. Okay. Thank you. I have a question. Where was it? Public meetings. Under the format of a public meeting, you have a closed-meeting items. I think that's very rare. Why would you go into a closed session in a public meeting? Just a question for staff. I'm asking for clarification on that one. Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden. Aren't there times when we've gone in, at least, you mean, we're in a regular meeting, like?
No.
Sorry. I'm not understanding.
This is dealing with a public meeting, per se. In other words, the public is participating in the room. Why would you go to a closed-meeting format?
Well, let me use an example. What if there was a public meeting two years ago about the PowerCo? And some of us had, you know, there'd been an NDA signed and a question was asked, and we needed clarification. Wouldn't legal counsel not take us into private before we answered?
You would exclude the public from the, and you wouldn't do that in a public meeting. You'd do that in a regular session of council. Nick, have I got that wrong?
Thank you, Warden. So I think it would be rare that staff would prepare reports that would go under the Closed Meeting Items section that said if there was something coming forward that was either the subject of existing litigation. So in the planning context, if there was a property that was adjacent to another one that had some issues going on, I think it's theoretically possible, more often than not, it is possible for, like during a public meeting, for council to receive legal advice enclosed. That would more likely just be done by a motion from the floor rather than on the agenda. I don't think it's improper to have it on this as a possibility that's just rarely exercised, but I hear you that it is not commonly done, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. It just seems strange to me. Okay. Any other comments, questions regarding those two, those sections? Yes, Counselor Sloan.
We're not, I'm jumping ahead. We're not up to 18 yet, right?
Not yet.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Then let's proceed with, is it 16? Notice of motion. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Staff are proposing updates to the way that the notice of motion is dealt with. It's not particularly clear in our current bylaw. And what we are proposing is, we would like to add a deadline for submitting notices of motion to the Tuesday at noon preceding the distribution of the agenda on the Thursday. And additionally, we have updated this section to provide clarity as to when a notice of motion will be dealt with. Currently, if it appears on the agenda, it can be immediately dealt with at that meeting, where it appears on the agenda, which really negates the notice. It's more of just a motion at that point. So it is recommended that a notice of motion must first appear on the agenda, and then it will be dealt with at a subsequent meeting, but this is up to council's discretion. And then staff, as indicated in the previous section, we have added a section for motions, and that is for, if a notice of motion has appeared, it's been sent in, it's appeared on the agenda. And then at the next meeting, it appears under the Motion section, and that is when it will be dealt with and voted on. That is what staff is recommending, but we are happy to take direction.
Okay. Thank you for that. Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not sure how that got missed, because that was the general understanding. It's always been that you've come to subsequent meetings. I'm not sure how we dropped the ball on that one.
Possibly. Possibly. I would think with the establishment of a new structure under the agenda, that should something of an urgent nature come along, it could be dealt with under approval of agenda, the addition of an item, with the consent of council, of course. You're looking at me a little strange there, Blaine.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a couple of thoughts here. Maybe we need to factor this into the recommendations in council's discussion on the actual structure of the agenda. In my previous life, we had a section just entitled Members' Motions. But those were always on the Committee of the Whole agenda, so council did get essentially two opportunities for discussion on those points, right? If we have the Committee of the Whole structure, then essentially, council could be, we'd have to look at how those notice of motions actually are integrated, because there could be a notice of motion, then the actual motion at committee, then the motion again at council. There's a number of opportunities. I'm certainly not stating that, you know, we shouldn't be courteous. Members, and that's, I think, the whole intent behind the notice of motion is to give notice that you're bringing a motion forward, and then it's on the agenda. But I'm, I would question or ask council to consider, is a notice of motion actually required if we have a member's motion on the Committee of the Whole meeting, and then two weeks later, it's finally passed by council? Council does have two opportunities to actually discuss the motion. Thank you, Warden.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know if staff's looking for direction, I agree that if we are, by structuring the agenda differently, if we are providing that space where we can hear and debate, but we're not making a decision, we're maybe making a recommendation to council, we may not need then the almost three steps. So I think, one way or another, I think as long as there are two steps, where there's time to receive, debate, and time to make a decision, and the two are separate, that would, I think that would be acceptable.
Okay. I don't see any disagreements. Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Moving on to Section 18B on delegations. This is just an update of our delegation section. Some more confusing language and repetitive language was removed. And we also recommended that the current delegation section include a list of topics that will not be approved for delegation to county council. This seems to be a more common practice. And I can read them out for you if you'd like. So just if any of these council wants to strike off the list or if there's anything that they would like added, please feel free to let me know after I've read them out. So we reviewed several other procedural bylaws, and it seems fairly common that no delegations regarding labor relations and negotiations, employee relations, litigation or potential litigation matters, advertisements or products or services, bidders or potential bidders, election campaigning, requests for financial assistance and fee waivers outside of established processes, matters which have been decided upon by council during the current term of council, and requests for reconsideration, matters which have been referred to staff for a report until the matter is before council or committee, and matters which are subject of an education and training session. So I would be happy to receive any feedback that council has about that list. Thank you.
Okay. Before we open it up, Catherine, can you clarify? There are other avenues to reach council or communicate with council, say, through correspondence, which could be included?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Anyone who wishes to write to council can do so and have their correspondents appear in our correspondence section.
Okay. Counselor Sloan, you had some questions?
Thank you.
Comments?
Follow-up, Warden, and to your point. So a couple of questions. One, is it the CAO or the warden who decides if a delegation doesn't meet prerequisites? Or is it the CAO in concert with the warden? And secondly, sorry, I'll give that as my first.
The warden does have the discretion to limit delegations on repetitive topics or topics that are deemed frivolous. And I believe it is also the discretion of the CAO clerk if something falls within this list of topics. However, I do believe, and if I didn't, I should have included some sort of a appeal process in here.
And, pardon me, sorry, through you, Warden. That's what I'm getting to in the sense of who decides if, let's say, we had something that the council wanted to hear, and perhaps the CAO, or sorry, staff or the warden or whomever, I just, that process of an appeal. Maybe it says the warden says the letter can come to council requesting a delegation. We then go through it. And again, just sort of, you know, as we change things, I think we have to look at that. And lastly, there's nothing that excludes a member of council from making a delegation on this list. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other comments, thoughts, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just seeing that if council's in agreement, I will make sure that there's a provision for an appeal process.
Well, as you say, perhaps simple correspondence is the form of the appeal. You were just scratching, or, okay, you had your hand up. Okay, Deputy Warden?
Thinking, scratching.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that, because normally you come as a delegation, get one kick of the cat, and you generally aren't allowed back in for a certain timeframe before you can come back. And unless it's a different message, but...
I agree.
That'd be the discretion of the warden and CAO to discern whether there's enough difference in the messaging to warrant a second delegation.
I'm sorry. I agree with you completely. I think what was intended was suggest is that if a particular group was denied opportunity to present in front of council in the first place, then there would be an opportunity, they could come back through councils a whole and petition through a letter, just using it as a simple example. If council decided to overrule that, then that's council's discretion and bring them in. If council decided not to, then it's... I'm not talking about multiple delegations, Deputy Warden. I'm just thinking that in case if someone thinks that they really want to get in front of council and it's been denied because of any of these particular criteria, and then if council disagrees with that, there's an avenue there. They can get them in. It's an opportunity. I think that's what Catherine's referring to. Counselor Shiger?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I just want to think this through carefully, because either we delegate the discretion to the warden or we don't. So if there's room to appeal by going to council, then let's just make that almost a request to say, or the process to say, if you want a delegation, write a request to council, and then that becomes very cumbersome.
Yep.
So I understand, but at some point, you know, we elect a warden, and we trust, we have to trust, the procedural bylaw is there to say, add the judgment or the discretion. So I would caution around an appeal process, because that could be endless.
Fair enough. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'm struggling with this too. Just my experience is that maybe in all the time I've been sitting in the chair, as a Southholder here, that maybe once rejected somebody coming to council, and for good reasons. I can't imagine why you'd want to bypass the experience of sitting in the chair and the CAO, too.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, through you, Warden. So, and again, a good discussion. If my, if I was the warden or, and something came through which was in the benefit of council but was against my, let's say, personal religious convictions, and I said no to a group, would that be fair to the council as a whole? I'm just, as we're discussing this, I think it's fair for us to think about what the options are. I appreciate that staff are trying to do their best and making sure this doesn't happen and to the former Elgin County counselors and mayors that have gone through this, I don't do it to be controversial, just to ask the question. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. You have something to add, Catherine, please?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just, wanted to say that I think the list that we have would be the reasons that the warden or perhaps the CAO clerk could use for denying a potential delegation. I think the idea is to, you know, avoid situations where people are wanting to have a delegation in front of council regarding, you know, a labor relations issue or a litigation issue or even a sales pitch. You know, we have this great website software, and we really want to come before council. And so I think that is sort of the intent. It's not to limit legitimate delegations. But I do think if council wants to review the list and if they have any concerns with the list, I think that is something that's important to do. and if they have any concerns with the list, I think that is something that's important to do just to make sure that we're not excluding or potentially excluding anything that council would like to hear delegations on.
Okay. Blaine, don't be afraid to speak up.
Just, just one comment through you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Sloan asked a question about council members making delegations. And, and I'd, I'd have to take that one aside and, and speak with Mr. Loeb on that because I remember and I, I'm jogging my memory here, I had a lengthy discussion with, with a lawyer once about that very topic. So I'd have to, before we, I, I give you a final answer, Counselor Sloan, I'd like to consult with Mr. Loeb and, and we'll bring something back. But there is something in, like I say, I'm, I'm jogging my memory here, but there is something that I'd have to go back and check on for sure. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Moving on to section twenty-one, section sixteen B, section twenty-two and section twenty-eight. It is recommended that these all, there are many different items within our current procedural bylaw that deal with the rules of debate. So staff is recommending that these be organized more logically into one section with various subsections titled Rules of Debate. So motions and amendments will be moved from section sixteen B into this section. Section seven, majority voting, will be removed and now just be called voting and will appear as a subsection under Rules of Debate. Section twenty-eight regarding the warden entering debate will also be moved into this section. For clarity purposes, it is also recommended that a section be added that deals with rules related to specific motions. I know that we often will refer to Robert's Rules, but it would be nice to have some of the more common ones codified in our own procedures so that we can refer to that. I am also working on an appendix chart that will be included that discusses some of the motions and, you know, which motion takes precedence and which motion needs to be seconded and that sort of thing, just for quick reference. That won't make up part of the main body of the bylaw, but it can be a, a good reference document. Section twenty-two deals with reconsideration. So when reviewing this bylaw, we realize that the current bylaw limits any reconsideration to the same meeting in which it was introduced and doesn't provide any other parameters around when something can be reconsidered, which sort of makes us think that maybe it could never be reconsidered. So we thought that it was recommended that we should be introducing a clear timeline for consideration and staff did review some other bylaws and often allowing for reconsideration after one calendar year is what municipalities have done. But yes, currently if, if an item is not reconsidered at the same meeting, it's uncleared if it can ever be reconsidered again. So we are recommending a timeframe of twelve months between reconsiderations be put in place to allow for reconsiderations to be entertained if new information is available that may affect the decisions of council. And then finally, just section twenty-eight covers the rules surrounding the warden entering debate. It is recommended that nothing change in this section, but that it be moved into the section that deal with rules of debate. So I would be happy to entertain any questions or discussion on any of those items included in the Rules of Debate section.
Okay, any questions, comments? There's a lot of material in that. Personally, I do appreciate the clarification on opportunities for reconsideration, something that has been very murky in the past. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. On, on that note, I agree. It's nice to have some more clarification around reconsideration. I tend to caution around timeframe because something could happen within three months. Something very, very significant, like a, I don't know, a new land swap or like something that would really cause a, a rethink of something and a, a review. So I tend to prefer that it's based on information that I, I don't like to tie it to a council or to a term or to twelve months because it could trigger just more work to say, well, twelve months have passed, like, let's reconsider this again. Like, I feel that the key is that something significant enough has changed that it warrants a review of a, a previous decision. So personally, I would remove the twelve month and focus on the change significant, something significant that has changed.
I think that's, in my opinion, correct. Providing we maintain something along the line that a motion for reconsideration still requires at least two thirds. So that it's not a frivolous and coming back. No, it's something decidedly that council. Yeah, something's changed considerably out there and we need to change our opinion and move forward. Anyone else have any opposition to removing the timeframe? Personally, I thought it was really ridiculous in the past that you want to reconsider had to be that meeting. Kidding? It didn't work for me, but. Okay, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, we can do some rewording to include that the reconsideration vote will be based on new information, significant new information coming to light.
Okay. Okay. Blaine?
Sorry, Mr. Warden, just through you, your two members of council. Who determines significant information?
Guess council would have to determine that that's significant. Those who would like to change the opinion would have to lobby pretty hard and put that information forward in order to get two thirds majority of council to reconsider. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. We'll have to look at that. Yeah, please do. Hope it's fact based. Any other comments? Counselor Sloan?
On the entire, we're, we're at the end now, Catherine, for the entire document, correct? Oh, sorry, I'm just still at twenty-eight. I didn't know if you, apologies again.
Okay. So now we're moving on to, what, thirty-four?
Yes, unless there's any more questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Pardon me, sorry, through you, Warden, apologies, Catherine, Deputy Clerk rather. The question I have is, and this is just a question here, we have Robert's Rules, right? And then we have the chair. So I've been reading, you know, when I first have been doing this as long as, haven't been doing this as long as the other folks, but you've, you've specified point of order and you've specified point of privilege. So by specifying those, does that mean that those are the only two opportunities? And the reason I ask is I was watching a meeting and someone at a school board meeting said, call the vote. And then there was a discussion about whether that meant this is final, you have to call the vote. Because sometimes as mayor, I would love if that was the case, but I just wanted to ask the question if, if, if that's, like, what would happen if I said in, in this community or at this table? You know, I'm impatient, call the vote. Does the warden have to? Or just, just a question. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I thought I read something here. Can you point us to us that, Catherine?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Warden. It's on page nineteen, to close debate and vote immediately or call the question. And just to further answer Counselor Sloan's question, if it is not in this procedural bylaw, that does not mean that, that it can't be used per se. It's just this, we, currently there is not a lot of direction for specific motions that are common. So staff wanted to include these and codify them in our own procedural bylaw. And, and these do come from Robert's Rules.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk, apologies. I didn't see that specific paragraph. Thank you.
Okay. I know I've often used point of comfort, but it's the same thing. We can get through. Any other questions or concerns up to section thirty-four? Not including, but up to. Okay, I don't see any at this point. Again, council's going to have an opportunity when the bylaw and, and staff bring this back to us. Section thirty-four then, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. Section thirty-four currently deals with the organization of committees. And currently, it indicates that the committee appointments are recommended by the warden and appointments are done at the first meeting in December. The way that it currently works is that we have our warden's election on a Tuesday evening and then two days later, we have the first and only meeting in December, which doesn't provide much time for a newly elected warden to sit down and look at committee appointments and make decisions. It also doesn't allow for these committee appointments to meet our notice requirements for our council agenda. So we are recommending that it's more logical that these appointments happen at the first meeting in January of each year to give the newly elected warden the opportunity to consider.
Okay, I don't see any concerns on that one, Catherine, and I think in practice, you're absolutely right. That's how it's worked for the last couple of years. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So section thirty-six is just the restriction on powers of members of council. There are no proposed changes to the content of this section. Staff are just recommending that it be moved under section twenty-nine or whatever that section will be numbered. That is council rules and responsibilities. It just makes more sense to include what the restrictions are after what their roles and powers are.
Okay. Seeing no concerns, moving on with section thirty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The same with section thirty-eight. We would just also like to move where that is in the bylaw. And then moving on to section forty, it's the same. We already discussed that earlier, that we are going to be moving the general provisions to the beginning of the bylaw. It just makes more sense that way. And then also to get rid of that section as it duplicates the new section at the beginning of the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, Catherine. Does anyone have any concerns at this point? We've had a very wholesome, wholesome and wholesome discussion on this. Counselor Sloan?
Just quickly, Warden, and I apologize if I didn't see this as well. The schedule. So when we're changing the bylaws with respect to, you know, having the, 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 the naming of committees till January, understood. Would it be appropriate for us to suggest that as Central Elgin does and maybe other constituencies, we have one meeting per month in the summer? I found it a bit unusual and I'm not, you know, for the sake of staff who are taking holidays, well deserved. I know that getting reports every two weeks from what I'm understanding with our staff, especially in the summer, is a consideration. And I didn't know, maybe to Mr. Parkin, but is, is, is that the sort of thing where it is the holidays? A longer meeting once a month is probably easier on, on some. I, I just put it out for consideration. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, thank you for that. Blaine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Counselor Sloan and members of committee. Yes, generally that is very common in, in most municipalities and counties that they're either through the summer months, they're reduced down to one meeting a month or in some places, there's a summer recess. In some municipalities that I've, that I've either worked in, sometimes the recess basically goes from Canada Day until the August long weekend or following the A M O conference in the third week of August. So there's that six or seven week timeframe. So either one is quite common in the municipal world.
Deputy Warden Jones?
I agree. Problem is, there's a lot of, in Elgin County and a lot of municipalities, a lot of stuff happening. Sometimes that's not possible. And the warden or the mayor, whoever is going to have to call a special meeting.
Right.
So basically have to call the chair. I know from personal experience that sometimes it ends up being two or three meetings in a July just to get through all the stuff that needs to be dealt with. And unfortunately, that's just the way it is in our, this area right now is the things are moving so fast that it takes a lot more time.
I'm wondering if we could turn this on its head and suggest that you keep the schedule as it is, but at the same token, at the recommendation of staff and, and the warden that a meeting be canceled. We did that actually in, in August this past year. But one, you know, one way or the other way. Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden. Let's turn, perhaps on the turning on its head, is it, is it, could it be written in that the there'd be one regular meeting and, and, and a date requested for a potential emergency meeting or whatever special meeting should it be required? I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I just think that people can better plan their summers if they don't have to know that they're going to be writing a report from the staff and perhaps council that wish to travel it during that time. But I, I take the, the comments of my, of my colleagues. Thank you.
That's fine. I'll be, draft up some recommendations coming forward for a one meeting per month over the summer or some kind of break. And again, at the call of the chair, you can have a special meeting or an emergent meeting should we need one. Okay. We'll take a look at that when it comes back. Well, that concludes. Any additional comments? Again, it's been a, a great discussion. Okay. We're ready for you. Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Results that the report titled Recommended Updates to the Procedural Bylaw nineteen forty-one from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four be received and filed and that council review proposed changes to the procedural bylaw and provide feedback and direction and that council feedback be incorporated into a draft procedural bylaw to be brought forward for council consideration at a future meeting.
Having heard the motion, do I have a mover and seconder? Counselor Latham and Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to section seven, council correspondence, seven point one items for consideration, seven one one. Letter from the Good Roads seeking council support for the establishment of an Ontario Road Safety Program. Okay, I know that this has come up before many of our local municipal councils and just speaking from Bam's perspective, we did adopt the motion to move forward. Deputy Warden Jones?
Yeah, Southwood has done so as well and I would definitely move this support.
Okay. Did you wish to second that, Counselor Whitner? Okay, please.
I would definitely support this. It seems like every week you read about multiple deaths and multiple collisions in the rural areas. I don't know what the answer is, but if we can get some help, it certainly would be a benefit because it seems to be getting worse. Thank you.
It is sobering when you look at the statistics and suggesting that there are more incidents in a sparser populated area and that's, yeah. So any opportunity to explore and figure out how we can fix this might be a good thing. All right, Catherine?
Whereas official statistics from the Government of Ontario confirm that rural roads are inherently more dangerous than other roads. And whereas despite only having seventeen percent of the population, fifty-five percent of the road fatalities occur on rural roads. And whereas rural northern and remote municipalities are fiscally strained by maintaining extensive road networks on a smaller tax base. And whereas preventing crashes reduces the burden on Ontario's already strained rural healthcare system. And whereas roadway collisions and associated lawsuits are significant factors in runaway municipal insurance premiums, preventing crashes can have a significant impact on an improving municipal risk, on improving municipal, municipal risk profiles. Therefore, be it resolved that the County of Elgin requests that the Government of Ontario take action to implement the Rural Road Safety Program that Good Roads has committed to lead. It will allow Ontario's rural municipalities to make the critical investments needed to reduce the high number of people being killed and seriously injured on Ontario's rural roads. And to further that, a copy of this resolution be forwarded, forwarded to Premier Doug Ford, Honorable Prabmeet Sekuria, Minister of Transportation, Honorable Kinga Surma, Minister of Infrastructure, Honorable Rob Flack, Minister of Agriculture, Honorable Lisa Thompson, Minister- Honorable Lisa Thompson, Minister of Rural Affairs, Honorable Trevor Jones, Associate Minister of Emergency Preparedness and Response, and Honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health and Good Roads. And further that, this resolution be circulated to all municipalities in Ontario requesting their support.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Jumping down then to Section 8, Other Business, inviting any statements or inquiries by members? Okay. 8.2, Notice of Motion. 8.3, Matters of Urgency. Okay, now we'll be moving into Section 9, Closed Meeting Items. Catherine?
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239.2. Closed Meeting Item Number 1, Labor Relations Matters. Under Section D, Labor Relations and Employee Negotiations. Closed Meeting Number 2, Sunset Provincial Lands. Under Section H, Information Explicitly Supplied in Confidence to the Municipality or Local Board by Canada, a Province, or Territory, or Crown Agency of any of them. Closed Meeting Item Number 3, LS 2411, Sunset Provincial Lands. Under Section F, Advice That Is Subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose. And Section H, Information Explicitly Supplied in Confidence to the Municipality or Local Board by Canada, a Province, or Territory, or Crown Agency of any of them. And Closed Item Number 4, Third Quarter Organizational Review. Under Section B, Personal Matters About an Identifiable Individual, Including Municipal or Local Board Employees.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Widner and Counselor Shiger. All in favor? That is carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report?
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed Meeting Item Number 1?
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Deputy Warden Jones, Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed Meeting Item Number 2?
Resolved that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be received and filed.
You did change it. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Hens, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed Meeting Item Number 3?
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner? Counselor Latham, all in favor? That's carried. And Closed Meeting Item Number 4?
Resolved that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be received for information.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Section 11, Motion to Adopt Recommendations from the Committee of the Whole?
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Need a mover and seconder? Counselor Noble? Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried. Section 12, Consideration of the Bylaws?
Bylaw Number 2437, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the October 22, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw Number 2437 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That is carried. And finally, the adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 12:26 PM to meet again on November 12, 2024, at 9 o'clock AM.
Mover and seconder. Counselor Widner, Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for joining us today, and look forward to seeing you again.